So Christina, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Christina Woin is the, she works with her team to think about and updating our critical areas for events. We've been talking about the floodplain portion of the critical areas, she's joining us online. We didn't have the event authorized for her to come in to be here in person. She's available. Christine, we're just housekeeping, we're having some technical difficulties with our baby captured. So we are recording this meeting as part of the record.
Okay, I can't hear you very well, just FYI.
Can you hear me okay? I don't, I don't think Celeste has her mic on over there.
Yeah, I hear you.
Mine's always on unfortunately for everybody, but.
Okay, how about now that I've turned my mic on, you can probably hear me.
I hear you better.
Okay, great.
And I see you.
All right, so yeah, we'll, we can go ahead and get started then, I guess.
Okay, we'll call to orders, the Chehalis Planning Commission meeting for July 8th, 2025. First, we'll start with roll call, roll call, starting on my left, go ahead.
Roll call, Derek Dodd.
Melissa Cox.
Kyle McCarragher.
Tom Gorman.
Okay, approving the minutes from our May meeting. No, that says that wrong.
That is correct, we did have a meeting in June, but there was no quorum. So we just held a workshop and no decisions were made, including the approval of the meeting minutes. So still left to be approved are the May meeting minutes. And there are no meeting minutes from the June meeting because it was just a workshop and not an official meeting. But still served as a public outreach for the.
Did everyone get a chance to look over those maybe for a second time for some? Okay, so can we make a motion to approve those?
I make a motion to approve the May meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, I'm gonna deconstruct my packet, hold on a second. There you go. Okay, do we have any citizen business for items not listed? I don't see anyone joining us on Zoom, all right.
At least you got anything?
All right, and moving on to commission business, Todd, I would like to turn it over to you for any updates that we have to our work plan.
Thank you Chair Cox, I have made some edits here mainly to the timelines. The MRC zoning code, I'm pushing that out to September, October. Because we're likely not to be finished up with the comp plan until August or September. Also work on the, the OSG, the open space government, we're pushing out to October to December. Since we'd already started on the MRC, so I'm just kind of sliding everything there. So the dates that are underlined have changed. The comprehensive plan periodic update projecting will now go through August. And then the critical areas code changes will be also in August with the conclusion. And that'll be the fish and wildlife habitat code sections and any definitions or anything else that needs updating. So those are the changes mainly just sliding some dates, not adding any new agenda items.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that update. There is no public hearing tonight and we don't have a presentation, so we'll move on to public workshop. I have the order listed here is going over the comprehensive plan and then the floodplain regulations. I didn't know because Christina's here, she's updating on floodplain, do we want to swap that to?
I think that'd be a great idea, I'm gonna be here for the duration and that way we can
Okay.
Have Christina present her piece and then be done, so.
All right, great, so we'll do, yeah, we'll do the floodplain regulations briefing or update at this time.
And for that Christina was gonna give us a brief presentation as she has in the past meeting on the, on the floodplanes, Christina, you, oh, there you are, you're ready to go.
I am ready to go if you give me sharing permission.
Oh, well, there's another challenge for us. We are technology challenged tonight, but I think, I think Nate's got it.
Okay, you should be able to share now Christina.
Yes, I can. Okay, got that going. Okay. So some of you were in the room last month when I presented on the wetlands section and the general section, the critical areas. This presentation's in a similar format, basically what, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? What's the basis for it? And then a summary of changes. And anytime you have a question, please just interrupt me and we can stop and talk about it at that time. And because it's floodplain regulations can be somewhat complicated. Okay, so when we think about critical areas, there are five different types of critical areas that are designated by the state. And one of them is frequently flooded areas, which is designated as the, the 100 year floodplain. So that area, as we regulate frequently flooded areas, is the floodplain, it's the regulatory floodplain. And so the chapter contains the regulations and provisions for developing within the floodplain. And just before we get started, just some terminology of what was being discussed. Whoops, I'm not changing my slide, sorry. Okay, here we go. So the floodway. Let me see if I can, okay. Sorry, still organizing my screens. There we go, okay. So the floodway is the area shown in the red hatch. And the floodway is a portion of the 100 year floodplain that must be preserved. And so the intent is that there shouldn't be any development happening in that area. And if any development does happen, then it needs to demonstrate that it's not adversely affecting the floodplain. Flood levels. In Washington State, new residential structures are prohibited from the floodway. So it's quite a restricted area, fortunately for the city, most of your floodway area is in open space or in other uses, so that makes it, that makes it better for the city. We have the 100 year floodplain shown in blue. This area is also referred to as the 1% annual chance floodplain because it has a 1% chance of occurring every year. So there's that one in 100. And also referred to in this ordinance as a special flood hazard area. And then also referred to by critical areas, critical area regulations as the frequently flooded area. The base flood elevation is the black squidly line with numbers associated with it. That is the elevation of the water surface during a 100 year flood. That's what we use to determine how high a structure should be constructed to be protected from flooding. And then we have two different zone X areas shown on this map. Zone X unshaded where there's no, there's no color associated with it at all. That is the lowest risk floodplain. And then we have zone X shaded, which is that orangish area that, and that is also known as the 500 year floodplain or the 0.2% annual chance floodplain. So every year a 0.2% chance of that flood occurring. So why do we regulate floodplanes? Well, the first two, pretty obvious, it's to reduce and prevent flood damage. And especially in Chehalis where you have a real high risk of flooding and demonstrated historic risk of flooding. But it's also because you made an agreement with the National Flood Insurance Program to enforce their regulations in exchange for the, the property owners in Chehalis to be able to purchase flood insurance. And so since you first joined into the program, which around 1980-ish, people in Chehalis have been able to purchase flood insurance through the NFIP. Currently, some rules have changed and now people can purchase private flood insurance. So that it's not as important anymore, but it is still exceptionally important in order to reduce the flood risk to your development. The basis for these regulations and for the updates that I made in your code are from the Washington State Model Floodplain Ordinance. And this document is based off of the FEMA Model Floodplain Ordinance, which is from the requirements in 44 CFR Part 60, so the Code of Federal, Code of Federal Regulations. And then there are some additional state regulations included that are in RCW 8616. So the goal of these updates is to ensure compliance with the NFIP. If you are not, if your ordinance isn't up to date or you're not regulating floodplanes correctly, the NFIP or FEMA, through FEMA, will begin some enforcement activities within the community. And that's what you want to avoid. Also, there were some changes made in this ordinance focusing on clarity, consistency, and ease of use. And then also focused on a better definition of the process and the requirements, which supports easier enforcement of the regulations, both by staff as well as that easier understanding by developers or builders. And then consistent application of the requirements. So I've made a list of minor revisions, additions, and then some of the bigger revisions. So starting with minor revisions, these revisions didn't really change any of the, the intent of the code. It's mostly clarification and additional information. So for example, in Chapter 17.21, which we also discussed that section of code last month, there are lots of definitions that have been added or updated based on the model ordinance definitions. We also added in some more specific reference to best available information, which would be information such as new modeling that's been conducted for the Chehalis River or tributaries or the flood of record. So information that you know is more, likely more accurate than the FEMA maps. And so by putting that more clearly into the code, it allows the use of that information. So we did some clarifications for the city's floodplain administrator. And to clarify, that is the Director of Community Development. There was some terminology that was corrected as well as code references. So for example, in some areas of the code, it referred to the special flood hazard area. Some areas it referred to, I think 100 year floodplain or something different. And so we just, you know, changed it, so it's, it all refers to the special flood hazard area. And there's some floodway requirements, like I mentioned, the higher, higher restrictions that are within the floodway. And so tho- those were provided into different sections of the code. So we've combined them and then made them more consistent with, with the terminology and the language within the model ordinance. And just to note, by becoming more consistent with the language in the model ordinance, it helps to, for interpretation of the code. Because if it, if the language is the same as what's in the model ordinance, then it, there's no room for interpretation of what it might mean based on how you wrote that section. And then there's a variance process, which is a very rarely used process in the floodplain. But it's been updated to comply with the FEMA guidance. And then some provisions for administrative variances were added in there. So it's very rare that a floodplain variance is going to be issued. It's very rare that people apply for them, it would be even rare that one would be issued. There's really specific circumstances when they might be issued. But for administrative variances, that would be some issues related to structures that are on a historical register. So those structures have less, less requirements because coming into compliance with floodplain regulations may affect their ability to remain on the historic register. So there's a process that they can go through with the administrator to alleviate some of the floodplain requirements.
Why would someone, why would someone get a variance?
Pardon?
Why would someone get a variance, like what's a, I guess what's an example?
So if there was a, like a water dependent facility that needed to be in the, like, right next to the river in the floodplain and they weren't able to, to protect potentially that facility could receive a variance. There's potential for a new structure to receive a variance from the elevation requirement. But that is highly unlikely that that would ever be issued because that would require demonstrating that it's impossible for elevation to happen of any type and that all the neighboring structures are the same way. And so it's just, it's very unlikely. But it has to be in the code, and so it's in the code.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Not, not yet.
There's the two types of variances and the type of variance that's very rare is, is the, it's the type three process, which is a hearings examiner's decision. But there's also a type two process that's listed in the code, which is approvable through a staff level review with public notice. So, and those variances are presumably more common, although in my experience, they're all still.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a reason a residential would try and get a variance, I didn't understand why.
Yeah, it is not recommended, it's not likely to be approved. So I went over one of the administrative variances, the historic structures, I'll go over the, actually it's next in my bullet list here, the detach accessory structures, also has a variance process associated with it. But first, these are new additions to the code, these are elements that were not, are not currently in your code that are being added in based on the model ordinance as some, as well as some other FEMA requirements. So currently the code doesn't have provisions for detached accessory structures that would be considered like a detached garage or storage shed or some sort of smaller low value structure that's only used for parking and storage. And so adding the provisions into your code allows for them to be constructed in a way that's called wet floodproofing. So that would be you put flood vents in the side and then water can flow through instead of elevating the structure. So there's very specific requirements that it has to meet. And one of the newer requirements to be able to be constructed that way with the floor below the base flood elevation is, has to be less than 600 square feet, which is the size of the, the average two car garage. This is based on a FEMA policy that was released a few years ago. But there is a variance process for this, which is administrative, would be an administrative variance to allow the structure to be larger than 600 square feet, if you can demonstrate like a a great need or that, that bad things would happen to you if you weren't able to do it. And so that's, that's another, that's the second administrative variance that would be provided for under the variance section. We also added in some provisions related to subdivision, subdivisions and development proposals. Based on the FEMA minimum standards has a requirement. If there's not a base flood elevation determined on certain types of developments, then the development has to determine it. That's not really an issue in Chehalis, you've got base flood elevations most everywhere. Recreational vehicles added in just and storage of materials and equipment. And then we added in more specifics about the use of elevation and floodproofing certificates, which are how new development demonstrates compliance with the regulations before, during, and after they've been constructed. And I put Arby's in there twice. Any questions on the new additions?
Nope.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay, and then this is my last slide, these are the more significant revisions. And on this first one, Celeste might be able to provide a little bit more background on this one. But currently, the requirement for residential structures is it must, the, the lowest floor must be constructed one foot above the base flood elevation. Or one, or to the flood of record. So one foot above the base flood elevation or to the flood of record, whichever is higher. And the proposed change is that structures would need to be constructed two feet above the base flood elevation or two feet above the flood of record, whichever is higher. And Celeste, do you have, can you add any of the background to this?
Yeah, I sure can, so in 2024 HUD implemented policy that they will not provide mortgage backing for any new construction that is not, a newly constructed home constructed after 2025, that is not two feet or more above the base flood elevation. So if we let our ordinance stay at one foot above any new development, Derek, how's he built? If it's not two feet above, your buyer cannot purchase it with a federally backed mortgage. So because HUD said they won't approve mortgage loans at that. So the city has directed by council to go ahead and implement the two foot rule for new residential structures. City of Centralia already has, Lewis County already has. So we're just in line with neighboring jurisdictions and also making it easier for developers to sell homes that they construct within the floodplain. Your, your typical first time, well, your typical home buyer in the floodplain is, more often than not, is a first time home buyer who uses HUD or uses an FHA or a VA loan. And if your home isn't to the proper elevation, they're, they're not going to be able to get funding for it. So, so that's why we decided to, to go ahead and, and implement the higher regulation.
I just wonder when that all stops, so. When do we stop? I understand HUD and that, but this year it's two feet, in five years it'll be three feet. 10 years it'll be four feet, I don't know. It's just, keep on adding more.
It, it, it also gives us a higher, because we are also now requiring a higher protection rating. It will help with our NFIP score, which creates a reduction in flood insurance premiums. Right now, I believe we're at a six, which gives us a 30% discount through an NFIP flood insurance policy. Each step you go up 20, okay, you're right, 20, yeah, each, each step you go up is another 5%. So it, it helps boost that score too. What we're at, I'll meet with our representative for that this fall to see where we're at, maybe get up to a five, to get another 5% off. Where that puts us in, in line for reaching that next step, I, I'm not sure right now. But I, we can definitely bring that to you at the time when we know. Unfortunately, with these mandates that come down from federal and then state levels, you know, we we don't, we don't have to, but I think it's in the city's best interest to follow along with that. And, and I understand where you're coming from, you know, what, what happens when they make the next, the next increase. And the next increase, I guess that's part of living in the floodplain, yeah?
I'm just thinking about overall, I mean, we just implemented the new energy codes, which weren't supposed to raise cost of building that much, and look at that, it raised it 50 grand, pretty quick. And so we're just pricing people out of homes, I mean, one foot isn't a lot, but it still adds at least a thousand, maybe two to, to the build. So I mean, every little bit that we add to, and I'm not, I'm just talking as a builder. Every little bit that we add prices someone out of the home and people wonder why we're getting priced out of homes. This is the exact reason why. I don't, I'm just trying to figure out what the, where the science is, I guess, behind the one foot extra that they're just man, manually forcing on us? Or if it's just a, I want to be better than, you know, I want to require more, I, I guess, is what I'm trying to figure out, why one more foot.
Right, go ahead Christine, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so there, there's a lot of things that make this change, this revision to your code be exceptionally beneficial to your community. One being what Celeste mentioned, so the ability to get those federally backed loans. But also considering that it's proven and there is data and science as well as historical records that demonstrate that the FEMA flood maps are very out of date. And, and so eventually those flood maps will be updated. And that is going to increase, in May, I'm just assuming it's going to increase the base flood elevation within the city. And so this just ensures that those homes, thinking as a home buyer at this point, that those homes are better protected from the actual flood risk. So the actual unknown flood, flood risk, not the flood risk that's shown on the flood insurance rate maps that FEMA's developed back in the 70s. And so we, we already know that just downstream of the city in Grand Mound, at the Grand Mound Gage on the central, or the Chehalis River, that the, this, the discharge for the 100 year flood, which is in cubic feet per second of water flowing through the river, is 20,000 CFS lower on your maps than what it actually should be. And so it, it's a known, it's known, it's documented, it's proven, it's in historic records that your maps are based on outdated data. And so this, this really helps to address that as well.
So how do we get updated data and put it in the maps?
Yeah, it's being talked about, I, I, it's really hard to do.
So they, they do go through and do periodic updates of the FEMA mapping. They, we just did an update for some of the communities in Calitz County last. We just did an update uh for some of the communities in Calitz County last year. And it, I mean, it's a huge engineering study, but um some of the other factors that contribute to that are 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 it's not only just increasing the free board above the the base flood elevation to decrease the chance of flooding, but it's also recognizing that the the flood elevations are inaccurate because um because over time, silt and sediment has come down from natural forest lands and resources and developed lands and 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 actually filled in some of the flood channels. So um the scientific side cites those things in in trying to say, this is why we need to add another foot. And um did science support one foot exactly? It it wasn't, but it was an estimation of some of those impacts and then a recognition that the one foot above probably wasn't sufficient enough in a lot of the communities that didn't have recent mapping updates. Um, but there is no provision that if you have a mapping update to reduce it back down to a foot, right? I mean, if if Chehalis happens to come next up on the draw and you're the lucky ones and over the next ten years, you get to update your flood insurance rate maps. Um, there's nothing that says your your two feet goes back down to one. It just stays at two again. So um so
Who who updates it though?
So in this case, the the policy, as Celeste said, was actually led by the lenders. It was led by HUD. We're just not going to loan on houses that don't have this. And then it um but NOAA um as well as as well as FEMA has also lended um some credential to adding more for different reasons. So
No, I'm saying like who who actually pays for or who does the study for the maps?
It's federally funded.
FEMA does. And we don't, we don't put in for our
Christina might have some more too, but the yeah, these are all federally, I mean, they're hugely expensive and time consuming and they're usually done on a regional basis, not even on a county basis. Usually they look at entire watersheds. Um, you guys have a special one for uh the Chehalis River that was just updated.
It it's recent, two thousand six.
Yeah, it's it's recent compared to other studies.
Yeah.
So but that was, I don't, I don't know. I mean, that was all federally funded and state funded through grants, right?
Yeah, I believe the City of Centralia still uses uh for maps from the eighties.
Yeah, so the two thousand six update was focused on an updated study on the new walk of river. And so that's why it's only in this small area um of Chehalis and a little bit of Centralia. Because then then the the changes, just they they like connected into the existing mapping. And so that's that's what that update was based on. Back in, I think it was two thousand twelve, FEMA released draft maps for the for Lewis County.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, and so they did start, especially after the two thousand seven flood, they did start to do an update. But there was an issue with the floodway widths and it got stalled and it hasn't been picked up again. And when I asked FEMA about it, um it's now been a couple of years. They said it's not on their work plan. Um, and so um, at at this point for Lewis County, it's likely that that potentially the offices Chehalis Basin may um help to move this along. Um, because it, I mean, we can go to FEMA and ask for it, but then they're going to have to like put it in their work plan and it'll be another fifteen years before anything's been updated. But there's different ways to do it. Um, FEMA has some programs where they'll pay you to do it so that their staff isn't working on it. And so um there's lots of different options, but it's really a countywide focus. So it will be the either the entire Chehalis Basin or the entire county. And it will take a long time.
So I have a question, Christina. The map that you showed us in the beginning, that where is that map coming from? That's something we've generated or is that are the FEMA map? What's the map that we saw at the beginning, that map right there?
Yeah, so this is based on the flood insurance rate maps, which um are a set of maps developed by FEMA that identify where the hundred year flood plain is and where then flood insurance is mandatory within the hundred year flood plain.
And this was released when? How old is this map?
This was, these are from two thousand six.
Okay.
But this is also information that has been made available digitally. You can go to the FEMA Map Service Center. Um, just Google FEMA Map Service Center and uh so come up you entering your address and it'll show you exactly what you're looking at or city zip code uh area and and it'll bring up the map and you can zoom in and out to see.
Yeah, I was just curious in in coordination with what we're discussing about the two feet on how, you know, this information on that map. That's I was just trying to connect so I understood more. Okay.
Good.
Okay, you can get us back to the last slide.
Okay, um, I called it a significant revision, but it's really not, but um your current code didn't have provisions in it that would allow attached garages with the floor below the base flood elevation, um although they might be constructed that way um already, but now this makes them uh technically able to do that. So you might have your first floor up four feet um to protect from flooding. And uh but yet yet your garage can be at ground level and it just has to have those flood vents in it to allow water to flow through. So um probably already something that's happened in the city, but now it's official in code. Um, and then the last item on here is the city has some filling provisions within the flood plain um that require um developers who are using fill to elevate to do a flood study. And the current requirement is that if the flood study shows there to be a rise in that base flood elevation, then they have to do compensatory storage or they have to contribute to a a fund that the city keeps to um support um compensatory storage or just kind of flood plain mitigation projects, which also Celeste can give you more information on what they're doing with that. Um, but this part of the code was missing a really important component in it. Um, that was allowing developers to cause a rise in the flood plain without addressing it. And um so the uh the requirement should be that if the developer is causing a rise, then they have to do a map change process with FEMA. And so that provision was added into the code.
What does that cost?
Uh, well, because they're already doing the floods.
Long time. Bye, go ahead.
Yeah, uh because they're doing the flood study already as part of the development. Um, the extra costs are not not that exceptionally more. Um, it it definitely adds costs and time to the project, but it is uh it is a requirement. It's a provision of the flood insurance, National Flood Insurance Program that is um not being met in the city's code.
No, I I meant like the the letter of map change process with FEMA. Is there is there a cost? Is there a timeframe with that also?
Yeah, it it would add costs and time to the projects. And this is if they, if their fill causes a rise in the base flood elevation.
Celeste, how long does that take? The letter of map change process, like what does that, what does that look like, I guess, what I'm trying to figure out?
Yeah, so yeah, I can't answer it. Um, it really depends on the quality of documentation that's been provided to FEMA by the applicant. Um, but um I've seen them take uh maybe over a year. I've seen them been done in less than a year. Uh, depends on how much back and forth there is between the applicant and FEMA.
You do know the city has zero rise policy.
Yep. You can.
So the the compensatory mitigation, the fee in lieu of, is still allowed as a mitigation measure to compensate for the zero rise policy. So it's not an automatic that you must do this study. So if you're achieving zero rise by paying your fee in lieu of, and and Christina, please correct me if I'm wrong about the way you've structured the code, but that's still an exemption because you're not causing a rise overall. You're paying a fee into the program that will eventually mitigate for all of those through a regional.
Yeah, and that's where one of the disconnects here is because how can you prove that the compensatory mitigation is going to um alleviate that rise or mitigate for that rise without um studying the impacts of it that fee in lieu project? And so um it's kind of is complicated and potentially we we need to have more discussions on this.
So the the code draft that's in front of Planning Commission tonight, um and I apologize that I didn't read this that carefully, but thank you for flagging it for all of us. Does does this draft say that if you're using the fee in lieu of, then you have to do the letter of map change process with FEMA?
Yeah, if they can't demonstrate um that mitigation will alleviate the rise, then that's when the map change would be required.
So so one of the, so they still have to do the study to show their impact to the flood plain. And then we've established a fee that allows us to go out and mitigate for that on a basin wide process. So that that part is already built into, and I guess maybe we should have talked about this before. I apologize again for not reading this more carefully. But it it seems to me that that's, we've used that on a couple of projects that I've worked on in the city. And the whole premise of that is is that they have to demonstrate what their impact to the flood plain is going to be. And then they analyze that and then instead of creating the compensatory mitigation by digging a storage volume on site, um they instead pay the fee in lieu of into the city fund. And then the city then on a on a more regional scale um achieves that through through community wide projects and other and other flood storage and stormwater mitigation. So that's that's the intent and that's the way that the code is applied currently. So there's there's no net rise either way. Um, the letter of map change is usually when you're changing the base flood elevation or if you're trying to demonstrate that the maps are inaccurate um just because of better topography or something that we have now. And when FEMA went out, they didn't do a survey of every parcel. They um a lot of times they use aerial photogrammetry, which even now is not as accurate as the LiDAR that we have. So
Right.
Um, so I I I just want to make sure that the Planning Commission understands what they're reviewing and then that they're able to give some accurate guidance on that. Um, and I think we'll probably follow up too.
Yeah, and I do have a little bit of feedback or a little bit to add to. I'm looking at seventeen twenty two zero three five H. It's on page. Oh, which page is this? I I can't tell. Page three of twelve of her report. Um, it says if the engineering report shows a rise in the base flood elevation, the applicant may be required to apply and be approved for a conditional letter of map revision prior to approval of the development permit. Doesn't say shall or must. Um.
So would that just go to you or Planning Commission or not?
If it says they may be required, I would be the one to make that determination. Yeah, yeah. Am I interpreting that correctly, Christina?
Yeah, use the word may. But that, yeah, this is definitely an area we we should probably discuss more.
Yeah.
Um to because ultimately the result is supposed to be that one project compensates for the other. And it's so it's ensuring how to make sure that the the mitigation actually compensates for the effect.
Right, no, and I understand that. And that's
That's the way the program is.
Yeah, that is, yeah. And that's part of the reason we are going through the FSIP so that we can identify these projects to keep our flood elevation levels down and and to um really invest in having a more resilient flood plain. Um, but you know, we're already asking people to raise their homes higher, which in effect is going to create more of an impact to the flood plain. Um, and then we are, so we are telling them that they have to place this fill and that they have to raise a home. Um, and it is the two feet is only mandatory for residential structures. Um, it it's not mandatory, it's recommended. I strongly recommend it for any structure. Um, but it's not required for any structure where somebody's not sleeping. So um but it it is mandatory for for any residential structure or any anything built for the design of people laying their head to rest at night, a hotel, uh things like that. But by by making the BFE, or I'm sorry, by making the um the minimum requirement two plus feet or flood of record, whichever is greater. Um, that in itself is going to cause more fill, um which is going to cause more expense. Um, and and then we're also telling them, you know, we're telling you, you have to raise your house higher, you have to spend more to construct. You have to spend more to to place fill and now you have to spend more to either secure a compensatory excavation site yourself or pay a fee in lieu to have us do it. Um, and now we're telling you that you also are going to take a year to to longer to complete your project because you have to get a letter of map revision. I don't think that's reasonable for us to require.
So then this shouldn't affect residential structures.
Uh, oh, go ahead.
Residential structures should be able to elevate on a foundation wall or piers or something like that that doesn't involve fill. That's I mean, that's the ideal situation for them. And so um because of those types of structures allow water to flow through um underneath the house, there's no loss of storage. Um. If you have a lot of houses being constructed on fill, then I I wasn't aware of that.
No, no, we don't.
We'll discuss more.
No, but no, I do think it is worth more discussion and I just, I don't know. Um, if requiring, I I think may rather than shall is enough. Um, yeah, I, yeah, we can talk about it more, though.
Well, I I just think that there's some mis misunderstanding about the way we use the fee in lieu of. We never use the fee in lieu of to allow somebody to create an increase in the base flood elevation. We've calculated that fee based on something established that shows, okay, well, if you if you pay this fee, then we can go create a volume that's equal or greater than the volume of fill that you're impacting the flood plain with. So it's never intended to cause a net rise.
Correct, then the fee is
I think maybe that's the disconnect that we
Yeah, the fee is assessed, it's reassessed annually and it is based on the prevailing wage cost to haul and tip dirt.
The what?
To haul and tip, hauling and tipping fees at prevailing wage for for dirt by the yard. That that's how that's how the the rate is calculated.
So it's not an indexed fee, it's just recalculated based on actual costs.
But do you actually do it?
We we are. I mean, we've talked about several community projects where that money can be used and and we use it in in conjunction with not only creating flood storage, but creating flood storage, working with um our regional transit provider to look at uh using some of that area as parking, um because you can use flooded area as parking. And then we look at, you know, contributing some of those funds to excavate out those things, build some parks and trails and some, you know. So it, we use it in a in conjunction with other funds to do other things and leverage it in. So the the product provides a multi-function out outside of that in in a lot of cases. I don't know if we ever go out and just dig holes, but
No, we don't go out and just dig holes, but it would be
We always, but we always accomplish the goals of this program and and we leverage that together with other programs. Um, and I've only been with the city a very short time, but I've been exposed to a couple of those um those different concepts that are floating around. So it's um conceptual what I've been exposed to, but I know that the theory behind them is is that they're used to leverage into something like that so that you can improve the drainage or the flow of one area and you can improve the storage capacity of a different area. And you can do that in a way that also functions to support other critical functions for the community, whether that be recreation or transit or some of the other things.
And there are, and there are a few projects that um specific projects that um these funds that I'm I'm looking at applying them towards. Um, I have spent a lot of time over the last few years securing funding to demolish the old derelict wastewater treatment plant. Um, these funds can be used to help offset whatever whatever grant matching funds we might need. We can use these funds. Um, or or to help offset costs that aren't covered by grants, to restore that back, to pull out all those hardscapes, get rid of all the fill that was in there and restore it back to its natural. Um, there's the Rice Road Culvert down by um uh Stan Hedwell Park um that is desperately undersized, that needs to be replaced. Uh, you know, and there are other projects around town that Uh, you know, and there are other projects around town that that uh, uh, these funds could be used to help help design and and help fund.
So the the may is actually being used to take dirt away though.
Create more flood storage volume either by removing existing materials that have been placed in the floodplain or something else, but leveraged with other projects too that. That utilize that area.
Yeah, we are in uh, the most complicated area of of the basin. You know, it's it's wide and it's flat and it it's complicated. Um. But these funds help again fund projects to help alleviate these issues that we're having, so.
Good discussion though, good questions. And a good presentation because it.
Yeah, that's all I had. So there's any other questions we can go over those or can continue on your agenda?
Real quick question, we don't spend too much time on it, but uh, if that person, we talked about it a little bit, if a person's in the floodplain and they don't think they should be. How does that process work to get them out? Like say they get the base flood elevation and yeah, like we said, it was satellite image and they're on it, but they're not. You know, they got a survey done and they're below or whatever above.
Yeah. So if they are what what we would refer to as inadvertently included into the floodplain, that would be where their ground level. Their natural grade is higher than the base flood elevation. Um, they just need this, the help of a surveyor to um, to ga- gather some of the elevations. It they can. They can remove the structure footprint pretty easily. That's the easiest way to do it if they already have a structure there. And or they can remove a portion of the property or uh. They can remove the entire parcel if the entire parcel ground elevation is above the base flood elevation. And those those are free from FEMA because that's an inadvertent inclusion into the floodplain, uh, but it does require a surveyor.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Christina.
You're welcome.
Okay, now. We're going to um, continue with our public workshop and discuss the comprehensive plan. With the discussion of council workshop direction and determine an additional review process. Todd. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair Cox and um. Members of the planning commission. Uh, we. Uh, Celeste and I and Kirsten, who's been here in front of you throughout all of these sections. Um, we we took a draft copy to a special meeting with the city council to um. Allow them to provide us some early input before we start to go through the environmental reviews. And also state reviews and also, you know, final planning commission hearings and do all all of that. Um, and as a result of that, we got um, a lot of the sentiment that we heard at council, I I will say. And I and I talked to council about this too, are things that I've heard from you all. Um, although uh, I believe what they gave me was maybe a little bit more direct um, as to tone. They, um, I think they gave us a pretty firm direction and a lot of the the guidance that you'll see in here. I mean, there there are some specific things that I'll cover. But one of the major elements that I heard most clearly was let's not be. Um, putting this into words that were that were very happy and proud to be putting this forward instead where we where we're having to do this. And we don't really see the direct benefit to our community. We should word it more along the lines of com- compliance and revision in those in those tenses. So. Um, so I think some of the changes that you'll see will be mainly in tone. And um, and and trying to and trying to bring it back a little bit so that the things that. Aren't directly tied to something that benefits the city of of Chehalis directly, but as a result of some state policy. Um, that that maybe is kind of contrary to what this community's goals and visions are. And 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 trying to work with that and implement it into our plan because we're required to by the state. So trying to. Thread that needle a little bit more carefully in balancing those words. Um, some of the other changes uh, specifically related to the housing elements and the housing elements in there. As as we. We talked about that um, with council. They brought up some some direct concerns and I believe Commissioner Forstman had mentioned this early on in our discussions too about this historic neighborhoods. That we have here. Uh, so council asked staff to investigate more whether those um, those housing requirements. Needed to be also placed in historic districts and others. They're fairly new requirements, so there's not a lot of. Not a lot of information about what's required exactly, but but certainly the historic neighborhoods need some protection and preservation from um, from. From being overly densified. And another uh, thing that we have is with some of the housing types that are proposed. We already have challenges because in the historic neighborhoods, there wasn't a lot of off-street parking pro- provided for those residences because they were constructed before there were cars. So um, so there's there's a real disconnect there between what the state's trying to accomplish by eliminating the need to add parking while adding density. Um, to neighborhoods, especially when it comes to some of our historic districts and neighborhoods. So council asks asked us. To take a stronger look at at that connection or disconnect between those two. Um, the good news for me is that we haven't actually developed those code changes yet, so we haven't brought those before you. Um, all we have is the comp plan policies. Uh, we haven't yet done the code changes. So. And now that I've got some more insight as to that, I can both update, work with um, Celeste and Kirsten. We can update the comprehensive plan policies. But then we can also, as I'm developing that those sections of code with Celeste, uh, we can then make sure that. We try to be as careful as we can about only doing what we're required to do in the historic districts. The uh, the other thing that we talked about was that the state law, while it requires us to allow. Uh, some additional densities and some of our 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 lower density neighborhoods were still limited by lock coverages. Um, and some of the other things, we we don't have to change those. We can say that you can have fifty percent coverage in a residential district. And then if if your house and driveway cover is forty eight percent, then you don't have room to build an external A D U. So um, so we can still keep that. So looking at how we balance the inclusion of. Accessory structures outside and additional structures and additional dwelling units and other things that are are mandated by. By state law changes to to implement. Um, we don't have to change those. So. Um, Celeste and I will work carefully to make sure that as we're crafting those changes, we don't um. We don't overly uh, de-emphasize the need to maintain some of the lock coverages and other setback requirements that we already have in our zoning code. I'm kind of just zipping through these. If you have any questions or anything at at the end here, I'm going to ask you for some direction, but. Um, the parking and infrastructure capacity. The council talked about that, um, and they. Um, especially in in some of the state law mandates in in House Bill eleven eleven eighty one, they're talking about. That we have to allow these extra densities and we can't require extra parking for them. Well, in neighborhoods that are already underparked and have a deficit in parking. How how does that work exactly? You know, we we have, um, we do have public transit, but it's limited public transit. It's it's not broad scale public transit. We don't have uh, transit corridors throughout. Um, you know, with with rail or other things like they have in higher higher density districts. So it becomes a real challenge and especially then again, looking back to some of our historic neighborhoods that don't have. That don't have a lot of space to provide for parking for the existing residents, e- even. Even adding none, but i- in this case, potentially increasing that that population. Um, the other thing, um, I think that we've all noted throughout this process is that even though you all have been working diligently and holding workshops. And and public meetings and it's been publicly noticed and placed on websites. And I I believe Chair Cox, you've even mentioned this before about, you know, we we need to do more to get out there for public engagement. Um, we've done. Um, Kirsten and and her group has have done public surveys. They've they've been out at public events. Um, we've been having public meetings and publicize the fact that we're doing this. Um, we published it in the newspaper. We have um. We have a public participation plan that we took to council. Um, so I I mean, we've certainly been loud about what we're doing, but the lack of public attendance and participation. That that was noted by council as well too. Um, and I, like I said, Chair Cox, I think that 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 echoes something that you've said a couple of times in these proceedings about what are we doing to get people in here so that they can know all this is happening? Um, and and there has been, um, there has been a lot of attempts at engagement and I'm. All I can do at this point is just express a hope that people become more engaged as it be, as you get closer to your public hearings. As we go out for through the SEPA notice that'll get published in newspapers and again. We'll send out another notice and say, hey, we're we're doing this and hopefully then people start to get engaged. A lot of times. Um, as I've been involved in these processes from the other side, um, the the paying customers that will hire consultants to go in and and work against. The bad policy and bad changes as they perceive them. Don't usually engage until the public hearing process. They don't really engage early just because it costs them money to pay for somebody to go and give them advice about how to go through it. Whether that's paying a paid planning consultant or a paid engineer or somebody else, they usually save their powder for the public hearings. Because to participate earlier costs them more and may not result in the same change by the end. So. Um, I've been through that side too with from my experience. So I'm hopeful that's the case here and we get more public engagement as we get toward the conclusion.
I think Facebook would be better than the newspaper, unfortunately.
Uh, well, and um. I don't, does the city have a Facebook page? I don't know if we post these things on Facebook. There's.
The the city, it's, no. Um, however, um, experienced Chehalis will. Will post and advertise pretty much anything we ask them to. Um, a- and I think um. Uh, asking experienced Chehalis, you know, now's your opportunity to comment. Please come, we're holding a public meeting or a hearing on, you know, adopt adopting the the comprehensive plan updates on such such a date. At such such time, you know, with the city of Chehalis Planning Commission. Um, a- and um. Because she'll bump those out constantly, you know, and bump them up that uh, uh, we really do get a positive response. Whether well, whether the the response itself is positive or not, there there are people that respond um, to that more so than the paper. The paper, it's a, uh, we have to publish in the legally have to publish in the in the paper that.
Yeah.
Is, yeah, yeah.
There are some.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So so we can, yeah, those. So I guess maybe maybe we should ask you all, I mean, as members of the community, where do you get your information about what's going on in the community and how do we get posted there?
From Chehalis, not much.
You know, is is there a Facebook page that you all frequent where it's because I, I mean. You're all appointed and volunteer your time to help to shape the community. You you must have gained interest in this stuff somehow. Where did? Where did you see that that we could utilize to help to leverage your experiences into getting the word out better?
Slightly biased, but Chronicle. But I mean, but they could post on social media too and not just as a paper, so. You know.
Yeah, they can, yeah. Chronicle, everyone read or watches that online and then. Parks and Rec is where I see a lot of, the only thing I see from Chehalis is Parks and Rec.
All right, well, I mean.
Not that they're a good source for this, but.
We do live right next door to Parks and Rec, so we could walk over there and ask them how they always get their information out too, so.
They do, they have a good, they have a good one.
Is there a way like I know like Lewis County Young Professionals or like do, can you post something in? Is Business Insider, is that still a thing? I don't, it's not where I would receive my news, but I know a certain generation might. I know. I don't even know if that's still in publication. Do you guys even know what that is?
Is he on the business connection or?
Yeah, I'm just saying, are there other publications from Chamber, from County, from, you know, uh, that we can connect to? So that we're getting more of a pulse on organizations within our area that are helping connect some of these people.
Oh, you know, and we've tried to do that as we as we attempt to recruit planning commission members to fill vacancies and do other things. So. Um, I'd say we've been somewhat successful because we seem to get a pool of applicants that that applies and um, so we. We can use those same those same channels. Um, if you know any specifically, just email Celeste or I and and we will definitely.
I know someone that does some Facebook stuff and everything that can. Yeah, help run that.
Hey, I told you we can go and talk.
The business, isn't it business to business? Isn't it he does? Is it, is it business to business? Yeah, yeah. And I think we also send separate from this, but I believe the department also sends a monthly report to. What Finance does on behalf of the department to the Daily Journal of Commerce as well. Um, so I mean, there are other publications that we could. Uh, absolutely. Um, but by default, because the Chronicle is the paper of record, we have to there.
Yeah, I think. Would be really good.
Yeah, I think just some internet presence, social media presence, we can, yeah, we can do that.
But I will, I will tell you, having work, and and I do this work across a number of different communities and and you're not alone. I mean. Often times this gets to the to the end mark, it gets in front of council and then. And then the community learns this is happening and then they all show up and they they think, well, how how did we get here? And we've been talking about it for a year and a half. So so you're not alone. Um. And it's unfortunate that it's that way. So uh, um, so I think we we all need in in not only this community, but in others. We need to figure out a way that we can better connect with everybody and I I don't know if if Facebook's it or not because. I mean, I I certainly worked in communities where they've had both community-based Facebook pages and and all the other pages that are based. Off of other people than the communities that do their own thing. And uh, it just seems like no matter where we get publication, we never really. Get people excited until we actually step up and say we're going to change the code. So. And and then at that point, that's when we do get public input. So I. I don't know if that makes you feel any better to know that you're not alone, but it's not, it's not any different than other places that I've worked. On on either side of the aisle, honestly. So I don't know, I, again, if if you all know, so I think that's some good input and I'm. You know, we've got the recording that I always go back to and listen, so I'll try to pull some pieces out of there and Celeste and I can work together on a on a strategy. Especially as we're coming toward the conclusion of the planning commission involvement in this as we get towards the public hearing. Uh, like I said, that'll probably now be in September, um, instead of instead of August, but. Um, we'll try to implement some of those ideas that we've talked about tonight. Um, so the next steps. Um, because you all have worked on this for so long, um, I would like to suggest that that. That you all look to what what I've summarized in my staff report. Add to it, add any of your own thoughts and and everything else. Um, but then. Authorize us to kind of go back and not bring you back pieces again to have to go through the whole thing, but just let me. Let me work with Celeste and Kirsten together, uh, based on the input that council gave us and based on any additional input you'd like to give us. And we'll go through and try to make those broader tone-based revisions and other other changes. Or if anything sticks in your craw specifically and you don't like something that we've talked about in the past, you know, let us know now and we'll try to revise that. But what I'm asking you is that that you allow staff to just take a final swipe at kind of going through and updating comprehensive plan. Um, and then bring that back to you as a whole rather than continue going through this because we'll never make it. Uh, by the end of the year, if we try to peel it apart again. So if.
Yeah, that's good.
Vote on that or anything?
But that was kind of kind of a long way to ask the question, but but we are interested to know if you have any other changes too. So if there's anything that we've talked about that that kind of bugs you or you think that we might have gone the wrong way on. Um, I mean, you're always free to individually email me or or Celeste or or Annie, um, any of any of the staff and let us know. Um, hey, I didn't really like this and we should explore something different and we and we'll bring it back for the final, the final read next month.
Sounds good to me.
So make sure we have a quorum next month.
Say we should just mention that briefly. I mean, what what's to say we're going to have? So what do we need to have in September for the public hearing? Do we have to have quorum?
And yes, you need to have a quorum for the.
I mean, that's a major issue with this commission, right? I mean, it's pretty regular that we don't have quorum. We have a vacant seat and we've got people that regularly don't show up. I mean, May was an exception that five people came. That's about a high, that's the high point. So. Yes, I know, but we didn't last month. And then before that, we had five, which was very unusual. We're always teetering on whether or not we're going to have quorum. So.
So we're we're working now, um, at at trying to get that other seat filled, but we're also working with council on some other ideas too. So so you're not, your your dedication is appreciated and and the idea that. Yeah, pretty much all of you have to show up every time, otherwise we won't have a quorum.
Right. And I I mean, we're talking about public participation, but we can't even get commission members to participate. So it's just. Yeah, I think across the board, we need to figure something out on this because I think. I mean, we could have a a meeting in September and not have quorum, so.
That's, that is very possible.
I mean, if one of us has something going on that we can't make it, then we're probably not going to have quorum.
August, uh, the plan is to bring you back the final section. It'll be the. August, uh, the plan is to bring you back the final section. It'll be the. It's the Habitat Fish and Wildlife Habitat piece, which is, which is very interesting and the changes there are also very impactful um, to the amount of developable land and the way we approach development. Um, so that's, that's coming back next month and then I'm going to try to bring back uh the revised comp plan next month. And then the last little bit of code changes that implement some of the housing changes. All that will come back next month and then we'll do a public hearing on it in September, hopefully. And if we don't get a quorum in September, then we'll either try to call a special meeting or we'll we'll punt it to October. Either one of those can work. If it doesn't happen in September or October, then we might just have to take it to council without a planning commission recommendation for them to consider and adopt, which they can do. They have the authority to do that. It, if we can't establish a quorum at planning commission, that's the ultimate fallback is that you guys don't make a recommendation because you don't have a quorum.
And for a quorum, just so I remember correctly, is it four or is it, is it a majority?
You have six, so a quorum would be four.
But if we had five, what would a quorum be, three?
You have six council members.
But if we had five.
If we had five, we'd.
Oh, if, yeah, if we eliminated a whole cap uh uh planning commission position, I.
Not a position. If we had five members.
We had a vacant seat.
Yeah.
Well, vacant.
Vacant seats.
If there were two, if there were only five.
Vacant seats count against your quorum.
Okay, so it's, so we have to have four no matter what.
Is there five would technically be like two and a half? And then you add one, so that'd be three, so they would kick up to four.
But the vacant seats.
Square root is three plus one.
But rest assured, the mayor and I are looking at alternatives and and fixes, so.
You definitely have the right people here tonight to hear that concern.
Well, Todd brought donuts every time like that one time, you know.
I only bring cookies when we get new planning commission members and and then when we retire somebody with a lot of uh I I I don't know how how many years of service had he served on the planning commission when he finally, it was, I mean, he'd been there for like six or.
Who is that?
To put me on the spot remembering his his name, uh, but but that was uh the historic preservation.
Not, well, not Mecca? No, we've had a few of them. I've been on like ten now, so I mean.
Well, we'll definitely bring cookies.
Oh, yeah, I think it has been longer than.
Miles old faithful over here.
It's, it's probably as close to that.
If it's something as simple as cookies and donuts, I'll bring them every meeting. How's that?
We should have.
That's probably the correct answer. I I can stop by Safeway on my way here. I I'm not a very good cookie chef myself, but I can, I know how to find a Safeway with a cookie section.
But please mark August twelfth and September ninth on your calendars.
Yeah, tell us. Two problems with that, is what what we're saying, right? We should have two vacant seats is what I think. And we should, it's not that hard to show up on a Zoom meeting. Like last month I missed, but me and Kyle were texting. I was like, hey, do I need to jump on a Zoom meeting to have the quorum? And it was like, no, we're not going over anything important, you know. I mean, yeah, like, like you said, it, you know, it it puts it on us four and then uh Scott is.
Healing, I hope. Does anybody know what Scott's up to these days?
I haven't seen.
Uh, yeah, should we do it? Can we do a check-in?
Yeah, I can, I can check in with, first it, um.
Okay.
Commissioner Forstman to figure out.
Who was?
Yeah, he was out, he was actually, he's actually been injured twice now. He was just recovering and he came back for one planning commission member and then I guess he re-injured himself, so.
Yeah.
So I.
So have you, so who who said that they weren't, I guess, what are we missing too? Did both of them say that they weren't coming tonight?
No, we um, I I haven't heard from anybody about attendance, um, so.
I think that we should revisit.
Yeah.
I think we should revisit that rule where if you don't show up for three times or four times or five times.
Well, we do have coming up after we get through comp plan, planning commission rules. Because as you remember, we have some residency requirements we need to talk about.
But isn't it a, isn't it a council?
You all set your own rules in the beginning. Council certainly has the authority to set your rules. But for some reason, when when planning commission came up with rules, they're all um signed by individ- that they're all signed by the planning commission that created them at the time. And it was actually the planning commission that adopted their own rules, um, which is okay. You can adopt your own rules for your commission or council, because you're all appointed by council, they can, they can set your rules too. Doesn't matter where they come from, but in this case, it appears that council had given you the discretion to create your own rules. So um, I I I am getting, uh, actually Celeste has been working with, Celeste has been working with council to try and figure out what direction that they.
Quorum is three.
They might like to go. We can't change the quorum requirements. We can change the number of seats. We can um, we can fill seats. We can do those things. Council can do those things. Planning commission can. You can't change the number of planning commissioners or the number of seats that you have. That has to be done by council, but. But yeah, I, so um, but I know, I say we, but but mainly Celeste and and the mayor have been working on this. This issue, so.
Sounds good.
We're coming to some interesting resolutions, maybe. Stick with us.
Okay, so before adjourning the meeting, you need a motion to take your recommendation? Is that what you need me to do?
Just need agreement. Um, since since we're still workshopping these items.
Okay.
I I need your input and I need your either support or dissension from what I've proposed.
Would it be possible to get a copy of the previous version and then your final version to us before our next?
You want the current version of the comp plan? That's on the website.
Yes, so I can get that, but I guess the newest version before we.
You you want to see the edited, well, I can, I can do the same thing I've been doing all along. I can use track changes and then I can provide that to you all. I've been attaching, like I attached the floodplain with the track changes in it. It's included in your packet with track changes.
Right, right.
I can do the same thing.
Okay, yeah, I I just wasn't sure if it was going to be marked up like the other ones or.
Well, it it probably wasn't going to be, but I can certainly do that if you.
Well, you don't have to, as long as we can just compare them.
Up to you. I I can send it out the same way I've been with the track changes, so I can send it out in a Word format to you all.
Okay.
When I print it, it prints the track changes.
Perfect, yeah, sounds good.
So that way you can turn on and off the changes and see them or not see them, if you all use Word.
That works.
Anything else?
You're okay with us taking it back and working on it?
Yeah, we can give you a verbal yes on that.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good.
I was staying here for two more.
I, I can tell stories for two more hours or we can talk about other things in land use and zoning code too. You know, you know I can.
Okay, so uh, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I, meeting adjourned. See you all again on August twelfth.